Good morning. It is now 9:01 a.m., so we'll start this meeting. Carrie, can you please take role?
Chair Carvalho.
Here.
Vice Chair Downs.
Here.
Regent Ariscotta. Regent Boylan. Is present Regent Brager.
Here.
Regent Brooks.
Here.
Regent Brown.
Here.
Regent Cruz Crawford.
Here.
Regent Del Carlo.
Here.
Regent Goodman.
Here.
Regent McMichael.
Here.
Regent Perkins.
Here.
Regent Tarkanian.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I will now ask Regent Perkins to lead us in the pledge.
Please stand if you're able. I pledge allegiance to the
For beginning, we take a moment to recognize that here in Nevada, we stand on the land of the Wachishu (Wacho), Numu (Northern Paiute), Nui (Western Shoshone), and Nuuu (Southern Paiute). We take a moment to recognize and honor their stewardship that continues in today. With this recognition, we state an intention to rightfully include their voice and respect them as the 27 sovereign tribal nations of Nevada. Also, before going to public comment, I would like to say that it's with great sadness that I share the passing of former Regent Dr. Andrea Anderson. Regent Anderson was my predecessor in District 12. She was also a former faculty member at the College of Southern Nevada, an admired Boulder City City Councilwoman, and a longstanding proud member of Boulder City Sunrise Rotary. Regent Anderson was a true community leader, and she will be sorely missed. Next, we will move on to public comment. For those who would like to call in and offer public comment, please dial 669-444-9171 and enter meeting ID 92849445069 and pass code 555555. Is there any public comment at GBC?
No.
Thank you. Is there any public comment at the Las Vegas System Office?
Yes, there's public comment.
Good morning.
Please go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Deborah Arteaga. That is D-E-B-O-R-A-H-A-R-T-E-A-G-A. I am Faculty Senate Chair at UNLV. I want to speak about potential changes to our health insurance. First of all, PEBP sent out the notice of the meeting on September 26th, 46 hours before the meeting, meaning that employees did not have the opportunity to submit written documents or block their time to call in. The most disastrous change that they propose is eliminating the HMO. I received dozens of emails from employees. For example, "I have stage IV cancer. I've already depleted my savings. What will become of me if the HMO is eliminated?" "My husband has MS. My wife is on dialysis," and so it went. Several dozens of emails I received. Moreover, they propose converting the low deductible PTO to a standard PPO. They intended to vote on this, although they did not present the economic effects this would have on employees. There was no structure presented. At the last meeting, we convinced them to table the discussion for their next meeting on November 21st, 2024. Our employees are not a line item on a spreadsheet. Good insurance helps us hire and retain employees. Please intervene in any way that you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment in Las Vegas, is there any public comment here at the Reno System Office?
Good morning. I'm Jim New, N-E-W, President of the Nevada Faculty Alliance, as well as the TMCC Chapter of the NFA. First of all, I would like to thank Chair Carvalho, Vice Chair Downs, and Chancellor Charlton for their time and diligence in meeting with multiple constituencies at TMCC to gather input on filling the upcoming presidential vacancy. The faculty who attended the forum with me felt that their input was welcomed and their concerns were heard. As you've heard many times here before, the TMCC Chapter of the NFA has steadfastly supported a national search since July 2023, when President Hilgerson announced her planned departure. We encourage the Board to approve Item 4 on today's agenda, the recommendation made by the Chair, Vice Chair, and Chancellor, and to move expeditiously to select the search firm, develop the position announcement, and conduct the search itself during the primary recruitment months of December through February. The NFA also supports national searches as the preferred method for making permanent replacements when a presidential vacancy occurs. A president selected as the result of a fair and transparent national search enters the job with an air of legitimacy, whereas one unilaterally appointed by the Board must overcome suspicions of cronyism. We are grateful to those of you who work on these searches, and we hope that national searches will become the default method for filling future vacancies. Thank you.
Thank you. SCS, are there any public comment on the phone? Thank you. We'll move on to Item Number 2, Minutes for the July 11/12/2024 Workshop. Are there any comments, questions regarding those minutes? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion from Regent Brown and a second from Regent Perkins. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item Number 3, Appointment of the Chief Internal Auditor. I will go to Search Chair Ariscotta to introduce this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The search for a Chief Internal Auditor began with 12 applicants when the job posting was removed right on September 6th. Following two levels of applicant screening, four candidates were selected for the interview. Out of those four candidates, one elected to remove himself just days prior to the meeting, and the second candidate alerted us of her unavailability the morning of the interview. And then there were two. Our two candidates each answered questions pivotal to the role of Chief Internal Auditor, focusing on the internal audit competency framework of professionalism, performance, environment, leadership, and communication. At the conclusion of the candidate interviews, the committee selected candidate Lauren Tripp as Chief Internal Auditor. Madam Chair, back to you.
Thank you, Regent Ariscotta. So at this time, I'll open it up for any discussion or questions regarding this appointment and also her approval of her employment agreement and her terms. Everybody's quiet today, is there?
Motion to approve. This is...
Chair, I have something today.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion from Regent Goodman and a second from Regent McMichael. And before I go to the vote, I will go to Regent Del Carlo.
Thank you, Chair. And just since a lot of us are on Zoom, how do you want us to let you know that we want to say something or ask a question? Do we need to text you or Carrie, or what's the process today, please?
Thank you for that question. You're welcome to text me, or just I'll try to keep an eye out on the screen to if you raise your hand, or if you find a time that you can just chime in, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Chair Carvalho. I just wanted to say that I do believe in the value of a national search, and as Mr. New said in his public comment. And it showed that... I was surprised we had so few applications, honestly. It was just 12 when you do a national search. It surprised me, but apparently that's the new norm after COVID. But that said, and I was really happy to know that they had four finalists, and you just never know when people are going to drop out. So I think it's good to have at least four. But with the two candidates, I was so pleased to see that our internal candidate held her own nationwide. I mean, she's extremely competent. She's got everything we were looking for. She's got a bachelor's and a master's in accounting. She's a CPA. She's got her, I think it's, I don't know what the designation is, CIA or something like that, for it's a special auditing thing. And then she's continually doing education, which of course all auditors do. And I was really pleased that we all had such a high regard for Joe Sundberg, and he has developed and mentored her over her 12-year career with energy. So I am just really pleased that once again, we do a great job developing our own talent, and our talent can stand the test at a national search. So I'm really pleased to be able to vote in favor of this outstanding candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other regions who would like to add to the discussion? Seeing none, I will then call for a vote. All those in favor of appointing and approving the employment agreement for Ms. Lauren Tripp, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Tripp, would you like to say a few words?
She's coming up, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you to the Search Committee. Thank you to the Board for this opportunity. I appreciate, and I don't take lightly, your confidence and trust in me. And this is an important position and the opportunity to serve the Board. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't thank my team, or the team, not just for their hard work, but also for their support during this transition period, and also some mentors along the way that have been very helpful. You know who you are. I've been in the interim role for a little over a year now, and I've learned a lot about just the role and also a lot about myself. So I'm looking forward to continuing to grow upon that knowledge. I can promise you one thing, and it's that I always try the best in everything I do. And me continuing to try my hardest, Ranche, and that's no exception. So thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm really excited to see what we do in the future and working together. And the best part about this job is being able to make a difference and help people. So I'm just looking forward to doing more good. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you as well. Thank you. Item Number 4, Upcoming Vacancy in the Office of the President for Truckee Meadows Community College. For this, I will go to Chancellor Charlton.
Hi, good morning. For the record, Patty Charlton, Interim Chancellor. Today, I bring forward to you a recommendation following a day of onsite visits, of an onsite visit with Chair Carvalho, Vice Chair Downs, and the entire community at Truckee Meadows Community College. And so based on our feedback and conversation with internal and external stakeholders, at that time, we presented them with an opportunity to hear their perspective if an acting president, an interim president, or if a search would be warranted. And so the community at TMCC overwhelmingly responded that they wish to see a national search. I do want to say that they don't get to determine the type of search. That's really for the Board. But their recommendation to us to bring forward to the Board for consideration was to have a national search. I would be remiss if I didn't give kudos and appreciation to President Hilgerson, to Melissa Olson on her team, to Ginger Dow, and to everyone, I'm sorry, to everyone at TMCC who came forward, shared their open and open thoughts and perspectives of the importance of this position, the importance of doing a search, to engage with stakeholders as you continue down the road and the path. And so with that, I will answer any questions that you might have, or I don't know if you want to hear from Chair Carvalho or Vice Chair Downs.
Thank you, Chancellor. I'll just echo that it was a very nice day at TMCC. We had great turnout from the different constituencies there. And I can just say from my perspective that we overwhelmingly heard that a national search was where the constituencies at Truckee Meadows wanted to see. And so I'll open it up to either Vice Chair Downs or any others who would like to speak on this.
Thank you, Chair Carvalho and Chancellor Charlton. It was a great day and a good opportunity to just to meet with such a diverse population, all the different constituency groups, and just to hear their concerns, their thoughts, and just I think the enthusiasm going forward. So I'm looking forward to moving on on this item.
Thank you. And so I'll reiterate for the Board, the consideration is whether to commence a search without appointing an acting or interim. And also, we need to determine when to commence the search, the general timing, whether it's a national, regional, or in-state search, and whether to engage the services of a search consultant. So I will open that up to...
I'll take that.
Sure, Regent Perkins.
Let's do this. I move that we conduct a national search commencing as soon as physically possible with the services of a search consultant. Is that all three? Oh, and to appoint a permanent president.
Okay.
That's all four? That's all four.
Yes.
I'll try that notion.
I'll second that one.
So I have a motion from Regent Perkins to commence a search whenever, immediately, essentially. It's a national search with the services of a search consultant for a permanent president at Truckee Meadows Community College. So I have that motion from Regent Perkins, and I have a second from Regent Del Carlo. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry. So we have one opposed. I'm sorry about that. Thank you. So that motion passes. We will move to Item Number 5, Acceptance of NHBC as a Section 509 Supporting Organization Development Agreement for Southern Nevada Public Health Lab, First Amendment to Development Agreement for the UNLV School of Medicine, and First Amendment to the Medical School Building and Grounds Lease for the Kirk Kukorian School of Medicine at UNLV. And for this, I will go to President Whitfield to introduce.
Thank you, Chair Carvalho, and good morning, everyone. On behalf of UNLV, I want to express our deep gratitude to Clark County for its ongoing partnership and commitment to our institution. The county's support, including providing the land for the Kirk Kukorian School of Medicine in the medical district, has been crucial in advancing medical education and healthcare in Southern Nevada. We also extend our thanks to the Governor's Office, the Legislature, and the City of Las Vegas for their invaluable support of the Public Health Infrastructure Initiative that we'll discuss today. With the Board's approval, we will work with Clark County to gain consent for using part of the 625 Shadow Lane site for the Southern Nevada Public Health Lab. This agenda item before you is to enhance the public health infrastructure in Southern Nevada. This project includes a lab and a blood bank. Nevada Health and Bioscience Corporation, otherwise known as NHBC, will develop the project. UMC will operate it, and UNLV will facilitate academic collaboration opportunities from UMC's operation of that facility. So today, we seek approval for four key items for this work. The first one is acceptance of the NHBC as a "supporting organization" under Section 509a 3 of the IRS Code. Already recognized as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, the IRS approved NHBC's application for this specific subcategorization, which allows NHBC to be recognized as a supporting organization for the exclusive benefit of UNLV in connection with the development and funding of the medical education building. NHB status as a supporting organization to UNLV allows for increased tax deductibility for charitable contributions as a public charity instead of a private foundation. Now, the second item. UNLV requests approval of the Development Agreement for the Southern Nevada Public Health Lab. This facility will be developed and owned by NHBC, while UMC will lease the facility from NHBC and manage its occupancy and operations. As part of the lease, UMC will be required to enter into an affiliation agreement with the Kirk Kukorian School of Medicine for the academic collaboration portion. Now, the state has allocated $35 million in ARPA funds to NHBC for the development of the lab facility, and the City of Las Vegas has committed an additional $9 million to NHBC for planning, design, and preconstruction costs. During the last legislative session, the State Interim Finance Committee specified that $35 million in ARPA funds, quote, "would be used to build an innovative 24/7 lab within the Las Vegas Medical District to bring critical testing, research, and academics to the community in order to improve patient care and better serve the population of Southern Nevada." The proposed site for the public lab facility would be adjacent to the Kirk Kukorian School of Medicine Medical Education Building, or MEB, at the 625 Shadow Lane campus, and will consist of approximately 34,000 square feet of space, which will provide for public health, a blood bank, and laboratory testing facilities. Under the proposed agreements, the 625 Shadow Lane site will be subdivided so that the lab facility will sit on its own parcel, separate from the MEB parcel, and owned by NHBC. Now for the third item. UNLV is requesting approval of the First Amendment to the MEB lease agreement. This amendment is necessary to support the lab development agreement for the lab facility, most notably the subdivision process set forth in Article 1 of the Lab Development Agreement. Through the subdivision process, separate legal descriptions for the MEB parcel and the lab facility at the 625 Shadow Lane site will be created, and the MEB parcel and its improvements will still revert to UNLV in 2030. The lab parcel and improvements will be owned by NHBC. Fourth and last, UNLV is requesting approval of the First Amendment to the Development Agreement for the UNLV School of Medicine. The Revisionary Clause, which provides for the reversion of the MEB building parcel, and both the MEB building and improvements to UNLV in 2030. This will remain in effect for the MEB building parcel. The First Amendment modifies the existing MEB Development Agreement such that the 625 Shadow Lane campus site, upon which the lab facility will sit, will no longer be subject to that Revisionary Clause. The next step in this process, as previously mentioned, will be to obtain formal consent from Clark County following the Board's approval. I want to thank you for your time today on this four-part discussion and for helping to support the ongoing growth and success of the Kirk Kukorian School of Medicine at UNLV, as well as NHBC, UMC, and UNLV's collaboration to enhance public health in Southern Nevada. I offer this agenda item for your consideration, but before we open this up for discussion, Warren Hardy with NHBC would like to speak on this work and this project.
Good morning. Thank you, President Whitfield. Madam Chair, members of the Board, Warren Hardy representing the Nevada Health and Bioscience Corporation. Just wanted to really stand here today and thank President Whitfield, Chancellor Charlton, and her staff for the great work that they've done on this. This agenda item represents a... I want to say we're a victim of our own success in terms of the medical building, that others have reached out to us and asked us to do projects such as this, that will enhance the campus at UNLV. Medical school will also enhance the services that are available to the public. So I just wanted to have the opportunity to thank President Whitfield, Chancellor Charlton, and the staff for the great work that they did in bringing this forward, let you know we're in support of the product. Thank you very much.
And with Chair, I submit that for discussion.
Thank you, President Whitfield and Mr. Hardy. I see that I have some questions. First, I'll go to Regent Del Carlo and then to Regent Boylan.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chair, Regent Boylan had his hand up first before mine, so...
It's okay.
Okay. Well, first of all, I agree with you, Warren, Mr. Hardy, that this was a terrific collaboration, and it shows the best of what public entities and government can do together toward the benefit of the public good. And I really applaud all of you for working on this because this was a huge lift. This is a lot of work. And I do have just, I have three separate questions. So the first one is the land that the medical education building is currently on will shrink, and I saw in the paper that it's going to be a portion enough to put the lab on. So it started out to be a nine-acre parcel. So at this point, does anybody know how much land's going to be for the lab versus what's going to be left for the school? That's my first question.
Thank you, Regent Del Carlo, for that question. I have with me my little A-team, and Dave Fromer can give you the exact number. I think it's an acre and a half. Go ahead and say it. Sounds better from you.
Good morning, Chair and members of the Board. David Fromer for the record, UNLV Associate Vice President, planning construction and real estate. President Whitfield had it absolutely correct. The lab parcel is approximately 1.5 acres, which would leave approximately seven and a half acres as the MEB parcel.
And with that, I've got a question. So within that, David, is now, is that nine-acre parcel with the 1.5 going to the lab, is that all built out now, or is there room for something else later, or is this done?
Yes, thank you for the question, Regent Del Carlo. Again, David Fromer. So the 1.5-acre parcel for the lab, I believe that will be fully built out when that project is completed. The remaining seven and a half-acre parcel for the MEB will have the MEB and the existing parking, which will remain as part of the MEB. And there is additional space that is undeveloped on that campus, generally at the southeast corner and on the western side facing Shadow Lane. So I think there is the possibility or capacity for future development. I would also say that at that point, we'll have to look at whoever the developer is, would have to look at how the parking works, because surface parking probably would not work with more buildings, so it might have to go to a structure, things like that.
And this is a question for you probably too, because it said in there that this lab is, they want it to be similar to how the medical education building looks. So my question is, is it going to be the same architecture? So my question is, is it going to be the same architectural firm? I don't remember reading that.
Thank you, Regent Del Carlo. I'll ask the NHBC team to verify this. I believe a different architectural firm has been selected for the lab, who's very well-practiced in architecture in Southern Nevada, Carpenter Sellers Delgado, I believe. Part of the agreement, as you note, Regent Del Carlo, is that there should be architectural consistency. So even though it isn't the same architect, I believe they will be following similarities in terms of colors and perhaps massing of the building, things like that.
Okay, great, thank you. And my last question is, I was really, really happy to see that with this lab coming on, that we're going to be able... You'll be able... UNLV will be able to start a pathology residency? And so is that going to... The process... It takes time. So are you going to start the paper process for that at the time you start construction? Or does the lab have to be up and running before you can start that? I'm just thinking how badly we need residencies, so if we can save any time on this. So thank you, Dean Kahn, for coming up to answer that one.
Thank you. For the record, Mark Kahn, Vice President for Health Affairs and Dean of the Kirk Kukorian School of Medicine. Thank you for that question, Regent Del Carlo. You're right, we are short on residencies throughout the state. In fact, nowhere in the state is there a pathology residency. So once the lab is constructed, I think we would be in a good position to put our paperwork together to actually get an accredited residency program in pathology. Thank you.
And Dean Kahn, how long does that normally take, then? We have to get the lab up, and that's going to be about a year, two?
Yeah.
To build? And then... So we're maybe four years out?
I think that's pretty good timing. It takes, you know, roughly two years to get a residency program through the accreditation process.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd see that while I'm still on the board. Thanks.
Thank you. Regent Boylan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just bear with me, our connection to the internet kind of thing is down, so I'm on my phone and I go in and out, so just bear with me, I appreciate it. Strong winds, yeah. I like the idea of this new lab and everything else, but I really don't like the idea of being connected to NHBC and letting them have so much control of what's being done with our medical school and anything else. If I remember correctly, and I'm sure some of you know this better than I do, it's the same organization that wanted to extend beyond 2030 the control to UNLV, and it's the same organization that is so controlling, they don't allow different pictures or different anything on the hallways or walls in the building that we now have for the medical school. So everything is really nice when you cloak it under 501(c)(3)CBA, whatever it is, nonprofit, but someone's making a profit, and there's big profits being made there, and we have some big guns from politics and education that are involved in this. And I really don't understand why we have to stay with... I know there was something about $25 million that they were holding back from us, and they gave back to the government, and it came back, and there's, you know, there's just too many people, too many cooks boil the broth kind of thing. And I do think it's time that NCHI and UNLV broke the alliance with this organization. If I remember correctly, the people who are part of this organization were part of a very negative environmental study done at UNLV. So it sounds very nice, and I like the lab, and it's something that we do need always, something new. But my personal opinion, from what I know and have researched, I think we need to cut ties with NHBC. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Regent Boylan. I see that Mr. Hardy is at the podium, if with President Whitfield's encouragement, if that's okay, for you to respond to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Warren Hardy, NHBC. I did clear this through President Whitfield. I would just remind the Regent that NHBC is also the organization that brought all the money, essentially, for the construction of that facility. With regard to the state...
Uh-huh.
Did contribute... The state did contribute some money to the project, but the majority of it was brought by NHBC. With regard to the requirements for the... I know it's been a source of concern and complaint that we are real sticklers about what we put on the walls of that facility. That is not unusual for this kind of a building, and I will tell you, it was very, very important. This is the only building in the world with all the money that Kirk Kukorian has contributed. This is the only building that has his name on it. So it's exceptionally important to the donors who would like to continue to have a relationship with UNLV, who would like to continue to have a relationship building these kinds of projects for the community, to have that be a first-class facility. With regard to us making money, we are a nonprofit. NHBC does not make any money, we're not permitted by law to make any money. It's not a for-profit organization at all. It's 100% nonprofit, 100% in support of UNLV. We don't exist as an organization unless it supports UNLV and its efforts. Thank you for allowing me to clarify that.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I'll continue since it was kind of addressed to me. Thank you, Mr. Hardy, and I refer to you as one of the big guns who are part of this organization, and I thank you, really, I thank you for confirming the fact that you control, or NHBC controls, what goes up in the hallways or rooms of that building, and that's not right. You should have no control of what Dean Kahn or his people or UMC do inside that building. The money was produced, thank you very much, and we built a thing... I was the one in favor of having Kirk Kukorian's name on this building. I voted for it. So, like I said before, cloaking a business in the 501(c)(3), come now, you're not allowed to make money, but then the people make big money in there, so the 501(c)(3)...
Regent Boylan, I apologize to interrupt. Regent Boylan, this is Chris Nielsen, your special counsel. I just wanted to remind you and members of the board that we're here today really for the four items as outlined on the agenda, as introduced by President Whitfield, which is really the acceptance of the NHBC as an organization, as a nonprofit, the development agreement, the amendment to the building, and then the amendment to the development... First Amendment to the development agreement, and I just caution you to kind of stay within those goalposts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counsel. I always appreciate, and I'm glad you're there, I love you guys. But, yeah, I'm staying within the goalposts, and I'm letting you know why I don't want us to have much to do with NHBC. Thank you, though. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Chair Carvalho, if I may. Chair Carvalho, this is Regent Goodman.
Yes, I was just going to say that I'm going to you next, and then to Regent Brager, and then to Regent Brown.
Thank you very much. Just to give some background, we have NHBC here as a supporting organization to UNLV. They are a 509A, and UNLV has four members on that board. And my question for you is, I saw that we have two members that we've appointed, the other two members, when... I see that there's two holdover members, I'm just wondering when those terms end.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Warren Hardy, again, for the record. Andy Artuza, who's a member, a UNLV representative, I believe, I don't have the exact days, but that expires relatively soon, I think the first of the next year. And then the second, John Bailey, is a recent appointment, I think he still has three years left on his term.
But to be clear, those were not appointments that UNLV actually made, those are appointments that are being held over through... By NHBC. Is that correct?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, again, Warren Hardy. They are UNLV appointments. I can't speak to how those came about, that was under our previous CEO. I can't speak to what involvement UNLV had. All I can speak of is going forward, we are very involved with UNLV, we are very involved with their picks, with making sure that they have input and get the donors that they want to be appointed, to be appointed to the board.
I appreciate your answer, but UNLV, this time, appointed only Dr. Marlin and Dr. Macbeth. Is that correct? Were you received...
For this appointment, yes, for this most recent appointment.
Okay.
For the two that were vacant, that's correct.
Okay, great. Well, I'm very happy to see that we have this 509A supportive organization working with us, as in NHBC.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Regent Brager.
Thank you, Susan Brager, for the record. Dean Kahn, in regards to the lab, I have a question. Are you able to do concurrent, to be able to have the lab being built and get busy on the application to be able to do pathology and have students and all that you need to do?
Yeah. For the record, Mark Kahn, Dean of the Kirk Kukorian School of Medicine. I think there's a couple pieces that go into play to start a residency program. One is identifying funding for the residents. Currently, our hospital partner, UMC, is overcap. The second thing is, is that when our application goes in, Regent Brager, we would have to have the facilities and educational plan in place. So I think while the lab's being constructed, we can set up some of the groundwork, but we would not be able to submit an application that would likely be successful without that lab in place.
Okay, so you could only do certain things, but not... That's too bad, because the process is so long.
Agreed.
And then the blood bank, I think what's interesting about that is, is that... So that blood would really be here for our state. It wouldn't leave like the... I forget what that's called now, it used to have a different name, that's on West Charleston. So there would be a good marketing proposal to let people know that it's there and what you're doing, and maybe if there's a mobile that goes out into the public, to be able to get blood for that bank?
Thank you, Regent. I think there's two parts to the answer, or two parts to a blood bank, excuse me. The first part is the blood collection and procurement. The second part, though, is the advanced testing that a blood bank does for compatibility. And I think as our state gets into solid organ transplant, livers, kidneys, and as we get into bone marrow transplant, an essential part for cancer treatment now in 2024, we're going to need more sophisticated blood banking testing that really isn't available in our state.
But that would come with the new facility?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you for those two answers.
And if I could, Regent Brager, I was just double-checking this estimated time date with Dave Fromer. The estimated time for the building to be up is December of 2026.
But, excuse me, and this is Susan Brager, again, for the record. So by '28, possibly, or sooner, we'd be able to utilize that. And are we working with, since you brought that up, and I know that Regent Goodman and myself have asked this before, the GMEs, so that it's nice to have students and it's nice to have, you know, our campuses and that, but unless our federal delegation works with us, New York is dissipating in what they need, California has lost numbers, how do we get more of that when we are a state that is growing? I think that's going to be very important. I know that's not on this agenda, so I apologize about asking something that I shouldn't.
Yeah.
I'm getting ahead of you. Okay, don't answer.
Same advice there, I just caution you to kind of stick to the, really, the four items on the agenda today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll go to Regent Brown.
Thank you, Regent Brown, for the record. First, we all know this, but Southern Nevada has the healthcare system of a city of 1.4 million people, and there are 2.4 million people that live in Clark County. So I think the Southern Nevada Public Health Lab is just going to be an immeasurable impact on the community and have, you know, ripple effects across economic development efforts. And so I look forward to supporting this ground lease and building. Thank you.
Thank you. Regent Erskine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. President Whitfield, just a quick, easy question. In regards to the state public health lab that's up on the University of Nevada Reno campus, will this lab be a strong complement to the lab? Or is this an item that's going to be more focused on the UNLV med school, the Kirk Kukorian School of Medicine?
For the record, Keith Whitfield, President of UNLV. Thank you for that question, Regent Erskine, although none of your questions are easy. But I think the way to think about this is, in part, connecting it to the vision that people like Brian Knutson have for the medical district, of trying to make sure that what we try to do is to kind of co-locate facilities that actually serve our community and its healthcare needs. And so that's the benefit of putting it in that particular plot. I think it's one of the benefits of putting in that particular plot. As we discussed as well, the structure of this is that UMC will actually be the operator, and that UNLV, again, will bring the academic piece of it so that students can be trained in the kinds of operations that are conducted at that site. And so it is the kind of the interplay between the two, but that's how that relationship will play out and work. Does that answer your question, sir?
It does, and I am 100% in support of this item. So yes, thank you, President Whitfield.
Thank you. I'll go back to Regent Goodman.
Thank you. I just wanted to, as the Health Sciences Committee Chair, I just wanted to provide a little bit of background. Essentially, the state has $35 million that is those ARPA funds, and that money was given to NHBC. And so the city has come in with the $9 million for the planning, and essentially, if, because that money was designated to NHBC, if this motion does not pass, that lab does not get built. And so for the future of Southern Nevada, for our healthcare, and for us to be able to continue to provide better care in Southern Nevada, it is vital that we pass this, otherwise we lose all of that money. So I just wanted to make that clear to our group. Thank you.
Thank you for that added information. Yes, Regent Boylan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am all in favor of something like this being done and this being passed. My concern is our dependency on NHBC, and if they can micromanage our medical school to the point that, like I mentioned, putting up things on walls, wow, what are the other things that we don't know about? And I'm all in favor of anything new and development in Nevada, don't get me wrong. I am talking mainly about NHBC and us being free of them, or any other organization that might have so much control over higher education. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. President Whitfield, I do have a few questions regarding the parcel. So as this building parcel is being carved out and parceled, I... From what I'm reading on the development agreement, the CCNRs will change in relation to that, and I don't know if it's... If we're able to... We don't have the CCNRs as part of this, and I think that will be... They'll be developed as this development will move forward, but I think it's imperative that we ensure that there is enough parking for this area. I know that as the medical district is being developed, that parking is a concern, and I don't know if Mr. Fromer can add some more clarification to what we see as the future of parking in the area, or if that is for a future discussion, but I do have that small concern. And I will say that I am 100% in support of this lab being developed. I did hear from med students when I was at the med school recently, that they very much look forward to this, and I think it is necessary as we move forward, as Regent Brown has said. So thank you, Mr. Fromer.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Regent Carvalho, Chair Carvalho, David Fromer, for the record from UNLV. Good question, and great question, actually, because parking is one of those things that has to be addressed. No one necessarily loves addressing it, but if it's not there and working properly, you have an operational and an access issue. In the short term, the way the agreements have been structured is the existing parking, which is a... is the existing parking, which is approximately 300 parking spaces, is dedicated to the MEB building. So that will not change. And that 300 parking count has been designed for when the building is at maximum student count. It's designed up to 120. I know the school has plans to go up to 90 at some point. Uh, right now, uh, our parking team has estimated that the maximum utilization is about 55%. So that trends pretty well with a class right now at, I think, 66 students to support growth. Uh, the lab parcel will develop its own parking, estimated approximately 50 parking spaces, maybe a touch more. So, in the near term, the intent is each building will be parked separately with surface parking and they will not share parking, which I think operationally is generally a, a smart way to go because then you're not competing for parking among two different, uh, buildings and two different functions and tenants. Uh, long-term, there is some si-, space on the campus to develop further, whatever might come about. Uh, I would say that, uh, there is capacity to build more buildings, but I think at that point, uh, the campus would start to need to look at a structured parking approach, which is what we use on the Maryland campus. And, uh, there are a lot of dynamics in the broader, so, Las Vegas Medical District and at the city. Uh, we've talked with, uh, the city staff and their parking management and Councilman Knudsen, I know, Regent Goodman, you have a lot of background there as well. Um, there is no overall parking authority in the medical district. Every property manages its own parking. So, that's been a discussion for several years, if that should change. Uh, you know, parking is one of those things where you don't want to overbuild, but if a patient or a student or a doctor can't get to what they need to do, you have a problem. And, you know, how you deal with that, I think, is still an open question because right now, each site is managing that independently. And whether that becomes more of a district parching, parking approach, which is a much different operation, I think that's something that's been talked about. It hasn't really gained traction yet. But, uh, my general belief for the medical district is, uh, whether it's individual parking authorities for each site or a central parking authority, uh, you're probably gonna see things go more to a structured parking approach as opposed to surface parking for land use and density. Uh, you know, the notion of free parking, uh, may be something that's challenged more broadly. It may be free to the customer, but it may not be free overall because building parking structures is costly. But I think, uh, there will need to be a change in kind of the parking philosophy, whether it's site by site or overall, because I think right now, the notion of a lot of surface parking and kind of, uh, you know, uh, fishing expedition to find a space, that will only last so long with a medical district that's growing and getting more dense. So I, I don't know if that answers the question fully, but it's more of a philosophical kind of thinking about how this might work going forward.
I appreciate your, your, um, your input on that. I, um, I do think it's very important, since this, this land is, is UNLV's, we need to, we need to get ahead of that and, and start thinking about that. And can I ask, is this, is the, is this area, um, uh, the county or the city?
Uh, thank you for the question, Chair Carvalho. So, the, uh, the, the, uh, authority over planning and zoning and building is the city of Las Vegas in this area?
Okay, um, so I, I hope that we can work collaboratively, collaboratively with the city of Las Vegas as well. I think that there are some opportunities to be had. And, and, and you're, you're right, that students, patients, doctors need to have that parking in, in, in that area. And, um, I think it's something that we need to, to seriously consider as part of this development. Um, thank you. Um, I, first I'll go to, um, Regent Goodman and then Regent Ariscotta.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I think it's vital that, um, we recognize, uh, Elda and Mandy and Mike. Uh, I know that this was a lot of work to put this together and to, um, you know, moving forward, protecting the interests of UNLV is vital. And I greatly appreciate all the time that they put into this. So thank you. And, um, with that, Chair, I'm happy to make a motion to approve.
Um, I would ask to, okay, um, before I take that second, Regent Goodman, um, I, I just want to be sure that we are approving, um, items one, two, three, and four as, as stated in the agenda. Um, and then also to authorize the Chancellor, um, to, to approve the, prove and execute the development agreement for Southern Nevada Public Lab, the First Amendment to the Medical School Building and Grounds Lease, and the First Amendment to Development Agreement for UNLV School of Medicine and any other ancillary agreements, including but not limited to conveyances, easements and rights of way associated with these items with any and all of the aforementioned agreements and documents to be reviewed and approved by the NCHI Chief General Counsel or at the Chief General Counsel's request, NCHI Special Real Property Counsel in order to implement the terms and conditions associated with any of the items approved by the Board of Regents for this agenda item. And excuse me for my lengthy clarification.
Thank you, Chair, that's what I meant.
Thank you. So I'll take that motion from Regent Goodman. Um, and I have a second from Regent Tarkanian. Um, so I'll open up to discussion and I'll go to Regent Ariscotta.
Actually, I was just gonna make the motion. So, Regent Goodman, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion, the motion on the table? Seeing none, I think it's appropriate to, um, take, oh, oh, well, before we go to that, I'm, I'm gonna go to Chancellor Charlton.
Uh, thank you for the record, Patty Charlton, um, Chancellor of Nevada System and Higher Education. I want to thank the board for, uh, your comments and your feedback today and your, your very good questions. I also want to acknowledge, um, Regent Goodman, Chair Carvalho, Vice Chair Downs as well, uh, for their engagement in this process as we have moved forward. It has been important. Um, if there is something that is critical to Southern Nevada, it is improving our healthcare structure, infrastructure, and as we move forward, um, shoring up what we need for our medical school as well. I would also just, uh, echo Regent Goodman's comments. Um, of special appreciation to Elda Sidoo, Mandy Savinsky, and Mike Wicksum for ensuring that we continued through this process. Uh, lots of agreements going back and forth and drafts with NHBC and their team to ensure that we have the best documents that support, um, the UNLV School of Medicine and the Board of Regents as well. So this is very important. We have, uh, a good process in place. Um, sometimes it's been painful. Um, I'm sure that Mr. Hardy would, would agree with that at times. Uh, but, uh, we are in a good place and I appreciate the board for, uh, your consideration of this action.
Thank you, Chancellor. So at this time, we will do a roll call vote. Carrie?
Chair Carvalho.
Aye.
Regent Cruz Crawford.
Start, Tabitha, aye.
Thank you, Regent Del Carlo.
Aye.
Vice Chair Downs.
Aye.
Regent Goodman.
Aye.
Regent McMichael.
Aye.
Regent Perkins.
Aye.
Regent Tarkanian.
Aye.
Regent Ariscotta.
Yes.
Regent Boylan.
Nay.
Regent Brager.
Aye.
Regent Brooks.
Yes.
Regent Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number six, new business. Uh, yes, Regent Perkins.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just a, since we're gonna be hiring so many, uh, new people upcoming, I think it's time that we take a look at our contracts because, and, uh, like, maybe have something 30, 60, 90 days so that there's an off-ramp instead of just granting like a four-year contract and then us having to, uh, maybe the person's not a good fit. Maybe they, they, um, we don't, you know, maybe they don't gel or what, but we need to have an off-ramp. So that might be something that we need to consider in our future contracts.
Well said.
Thank you. Regent Boylan, did you have something?
Uh, am I, am I on? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, good, thank you. And I apologize again because our internet is down. I'm on the phone. Uh, no, I just said, uh, well said to, uh, Regent Perkins and I agree with her thoroughly. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other new business? Uh, yes, Vice Chair Downs.
Thank you, Chair Carvalho. Um, I think it'd be nice if, before we, um, complete a hiring process for a Chancellor, we could take a, a review of what the priorities are of the Regents as to how the System Office should function and the roles of, the role of System Office in terms of bringing forward the interest of the, the Regents as opposed to any personal agendas they may have. So, I'm, I'm really addressing how the System Office functions to, to represent what the board is after. So, uh, if we can just discuss that, possibly give some guidance so that any future, uh, Chancellor would know how we would like to see things go. Thank you.
Well said, Regent Downs.
Thank you. Any other new business? Seeing none, I will go to item number seven, public comment. Is there any public comment at GBC?
There's none over here at GBC.
Thank you. Is there any public comment at the System Office in Las Vegas?
No public comment, thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment here at the System Office in Reno?
Sorry. Um, good morning, my name is, uh, Ginger Doe. That's J.I.N.G.E.R., last name D.O.E. I am the current Faculty Senate Chair at Chucky Meadows Community College. And I would like to thank Chancellor Charlton, Chair Carvalho, and Vice Chair Downs for coming to TMCC and listening closely to all stakeholders. I would also like to thank the Board of Regents for their support of a national search for a permanent president as we move forward towards the bittersweet end of President Hilkerson's term with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment here at the Reno System Office. SCS, is there any public comment on the phone? Thank you. So with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 10:04.